Hi, folks. This is the public hearing for the Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission. We have gotten word that a couple of members are having a little trouble logging on, so we're starting this so that you all know that we're here. But we are going to just delay for a couple of minutes to make sure that the other members are able to log on appropriately. So just give us a couple of minutes and then we'll get started.
So maybe for Linda or whoever's manning the phone, no, it wouldn't be Linda, would it? For Katie or Shawna, if you could just let me know by text whether we still have people who are trying to get on. If we're clear, then we can just get going. Okay, so they don't have anybody right now who's contacting them about logging on, so we can proceed.
All right, we are going to go ahead and get started. So, good afternoon and welcome. My name is Kelly Lynn Mitchell, and I'm Chair of the Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission. It is now 1:02, and the December 15, 2022, public hearing is called to order. This hearing is taking place in the Minnesota State Capitol Building, Room G3, at 75 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in St. Paul. I'm here along with Commissioners Marath, Middlebrook, Schnell, and Estrada, and Executive Director Nate Wrights. The public hearing has a remote access option by telephone or interactive technology, and instructions for remote participation have been posted on our website at mn.gov/sentencing-guidelines-meetings. And then are we going to post those up here as well?
Yes. I just had them up. I took them down in anticipation of testifiers coming, but I can put them up.
Well, let's keep them up for a minute while I continue to read the rest of the materials. I'm just going to wait till those are there. All right, the reason that I'm insisting on making sure these are posted is the way that our rules work here at the Commission is that a person has to preregister before they can testify during the public hearing. So if there's anyone listening in who's interested in testifying today, the instructions are currently on the screen, and I'll go through them in just a moment. The public hearing is being held to consider proposed sentencing guidelines modifications resulting from some non-legislative amendments to the calculations of the custody status point, that's within our criminal history score, a legislatively mandated review of sex trafficking, and a few other technical modifications to the guidelines. The specified effective date of all proposed modifications is August 1, 2023. You may access a complete copy of the proposed modifications on our website at mn.gov/sentencing-guidelines-meetings. These have been available on the website since November 14, 2022, which is the same day the notice of this hearing was published in the state register. There are a limited number of public inspection copies available in this room, together with website access information. If you wish, you may make oral or written statements today regarding the proposed modifications. You may also address questions about the proposed modifications to the Commission, its staff, or witnesses, and if you make an oral statement, the Commission or its staff may ask questions of you. Members of the public who registered to testify before today will be called first in the order that they registered. If you would like to testify about the proposed modifications today and have not yet registered, please do that as soon as you can. If you're here in person, sign in with the staff now by the reading "Sign in to testify." That's over by Jill. If you're attending remotely, please email your registration information to staff@sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us right away, and the information that you need to give us is on the screen. We need your name, address, telephone number, and the name of any individual or association you represent. And once we have that, we will send you meeting access information. After everyone has testified, the public hearing will end. The Commission will take a short break before we start our regular meeting for today. After the public hearing, the Commission will hold the record open for five calendar days to accept written comments. Written materials must be received no later than December 20, 2022. Any person who wishes to provide a written statement may do so in one of three ways: by delivering a written statement to the public hearing today, by sending the written statement by the U.S. Mail to Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission at 658 Cedar Street, Suite G58, St. Paul, Minnesota 55155, or by emailing the written statement to sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us. The Commission will give due consideration to all written comments received within the five-day comment period, as well as the written comments received up until now, and any oral testimony that were received today. The Commission will meet on Thursday, January 12, at 1:00 p.m. to finally adopt or reject its proposals, and that meeting will take place in the Aspen Room at the Department of Corrections at 1450 Energy Park Drive in St. Paul. Let's see, how many people are registered to testify today?
34.
We have four people registered to testify today. We'll go ahead and take the instructions down from the screen, and then I will ask Nate Wrights, our director, or whoever you've designated to call on our first testifier.
Madam Chair, the first testifier is Tammy Jo Lieberg from MACAC, and she's joining us via WebEx.
She's joining us via WebEx. Is she there?
I'm here.
Great. All right, Ms. Lieberg, please go ahead.
And I'm not sure how to turn my camera on, so I apologize if it's just audio. I was trying to figure that out, but it doesn't want to let me do that. So, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tammy Jo Lieberg. I am the Director at Caddo High Community Corrections and the President of MACAC, which is Minnesota Association of Community Corrections Act counties. I'm here to testify on behalf of MACAC with our concerns about the half-point proposal. MACAC represents almost three-fourths of the community supervision in the state of Minnesota, and MACAC has three main concerns related to increased caseload, accuracy issues related to the available departure information, and the increased potential for calculation errors. This proposal would increase the time and resources required to complete guidelines worksheets. Community supervision departments across the state are struggling with lack of resources to adequately address public safety in our communities. This additional requirement would add more responsibility without adding any additional resources to get it done, essentially another unfounded mandate. To complete this task would require dependence on unreliable information. Sentencing information is entered into MNSA by judicial or law clerk, which relies on individual entering the information to be knowledgeable enough to code it accurately, judges to state this information clearly, and attorneys to file paperwork timely to know if the disposition was actually a departure. Other times, this information is left blank in MNSA entirely. This would require individual jurisdictions to go back and look for past entries and correct data over several years. With our current system, this information would be very unreliable. Additionally, finding this specific information in our state criminal histories is already extremely complicated, and this proposal would exacerbate that complexity. The result would be inconsistent and inaccurate data, increasing disparities across jurisdictions. This proposal would decrease the accuracy and consistency of sentencing while increasing the heavy workload probation departments across the state, which have a significant impact on community safety. The guidelines are extremely complex. This proposal adds additional exceptions to already complex rules. The proposal would significantly increase the difficulty of interpreting and applying the rules consistently and accurately. Sentencing guidelines are one of the most technically complex responsibilities probation agents have. Probation is heavily relied on to complete, decipher, and correct guidelines, and this includes advising the court accurately. In smaller jurisdictions without specific experts or departments, probation officers that have a variety of duties and only occasionally complete guidelines, this could create both additional time problems but accuracy as well. The more complex the guidelines are, the more regular errors are likely to occur, which could negatively impact clients, increase disparities, and drag out court cases if sentences are calculated incorrectly. So in conclusion, we are asking Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission to consider the concerns of MACAC regarding this proposal. Increased workloads, inaccurate departure information, and a correlation between complexity and an increase in error rates will negatively impact individuals, communities, and public safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have at least one question, so stay on there. Commissioner Larkin.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing before the Commission this afternoon. I appreciate your taking the time to represent MACAC's concerns. One question I have is, it seems like a lot of the concerns you've expressed would apply now, because one of the things this new proposal does is simply ask, well, what's the person's criminal history score? And if it's at a certain number, that would trigger imposition of the custody status points. So I'm just wondering if all of the concerns you raised already apply to calculation of criminal history score, because that's not changing.
So, those concerns actually have an impact on how those sentencing guidelines are completed and what we have, and you're absolutely correct. These are concerns we would have, but this proposal would actually create more work for the probation officers and create more time and accuracy.
Can I just ask, how? Because we already need a calculation of the criminal history score, so that isn't changing. The only thing that's changing would be the need for determination whether or not someone is on probation as a result of a dispositional departure.
Right. The departure information is where it becomes an issue.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. So the departure issue, finding that being very specific in court orders, whether it's listed, how it's listed, where we find it, if we find it from three years ago or if we find it from today, all of those things make it more complicated of finding that departure.
All right. So that helps me understand your concerns, because, so what you're saying is the added requirement of having to determine whether or not the offender was on probation as a result of a dispositional departure triggers the concerns you've listed.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the Commission? Questions or comments? All right, I'm not seeing anything. Thank you, Tammy Jo, for, Ms. Lieberg, for coming and sharing your views with us today. We're going to go ahead and call the next testifier.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Roy Spurbeck from the Minnesota State Public Defender's Office, appearing in person.
All right, Mr. Spurbeck, welcome to the Commission. Please go ahead and give us your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Spurbeck. I'm an attorney. For the last 20-plus years, I've done defense work. So in those 20 years, I feel like I've gained an above-average working knowledge of the Minnesota sentencing guidelines. I also feel like I have quite a bit of experience with the three primary Minnesota statutes that interact with the guidelines: Minnesota Statute 60904, Minnesota Statute 609035, and the primary mandatory minimum statute 60911. So I have a lot of experience with sentencing. So my view here is, I guess, a practitioner view. My concern with this change to the custody status point is it's too complicated. You're going to have a rule. Your rule is going to have an exception. Because this is the United States, we always have exceptions to our rules, except that your exception has an exception. And it's that scenario with rule, exception, exception, that in my experience in the guidelines and in 609035 often causes the greatest risk of error. So that's concern number one. The second concern I have is, it is not clear to me, as I read the change, and let me get the language right in front of me, excuse me. In the section dealing with when the defendant, when we're dealing with someone who is going to potentially have a custody point because of the prior felony, the Level 1 or 2 on the felony list or on the drug list, there's language that says, "The custody status was the result of a mitigated dispositional departure from these guidelines." It is not clear to me if that only applies if the current offense is committed when the defendant is on probation, or if it is committed at any time during the term of the sentence. So for example, the defendant did receive a mitigated dispositional departure. Now, the only time, but I think everyone knows this, but the only time that's going to happen is with someone who's got six points already, right? Because Level 1 and 2, that's the only place that's got to commit on that section of the guidelines. So you've got your mitigated dispositional departure, but let's say the defendant, six months into that, executes the sentence. Then during the back half, the supervised release portion of their sentence, if they then pick up the new offense, do they also get the full point? Because they got originally a departure. So when we use the word custody status there, but then talk about dispositional departure, who are we concerned about? Because I have to tell you, when I read it, I'm not sure. But when I look at the reasons being advanced for the change, it seems to be focused on, this is somebody who picked up a new offense when they should have been in prison. That's actually the language that Judge Larkin put forward. That would seem to be the probationer. But the plain language of it isn't clear. The second part of this is this idea of, you've got a total criminal history score applicable to the current offense is six or more. So all the way up and down the guidelines, for the lowest up to the highest, obviously for the highest, you know, that six or more is always a commit to prison. So if we get to six with that, without adding in the custody status, and then we add the custody status point, there's no more room to the right. There's no more boxes to the right. So it seems to me that all we're really talking about is moving the person into this seven or more group, which is, I think, and I think I've understood this correctly over the years, shifting the box three months in each spot: bottom, middle, and top. This is an awful lot of work for a three-month shift. So the current system with the half point, I think, I mean, I have several of these cases, so I know that the way the half point has been litigated in the current state of the law, this half point basically is shifting some defendants, clients of mine, down from, say, four to three because they were three and a half. So the end up is going to be a round down. That obviously has benefited clients I have on that part of the adding part of this. That half point, though, if they have a half of a custody point, they are in custody for purposes of the addition of the three-month, what I used to call the custody enhancement. I don't think we call it that anymore, but that's what I always remember it as. So if you keep it the way it is, that group who are on that way far side of the guidelines, they're eligible for the custody enhancement. They're already going to get the three months. So we have that system already. It seems to me that what we're, this change, it's complicated, and I'm not sure that, whatever the goal of it is, I'm not sure it's worth the complication. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. It looks like someone have a question? Nate?
Thank you. Nate Wrights, I'm in the staff. I have a question for you on your second comment about the language regarding the custody status was the result of a mitigated dispositional departure from these guidelines. Say it were to change to the custody status was probation, comma, and that probation was the result of a mitigated dispositional departure from these guidelines. Would that correction solve your concern?
I think what you would have to make it clear to get to my concern is, it would have to be, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have like language right for you, but I think essentially what you want to get there is that the offense is being committed during the probationary period, and that's wrong either, during the active probation as a custody status. Because you understand my point, that custody status includes seven things.
Right.
So when you just use custody status there, you know...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
But I guess, do you understand why I could see it as less than clear?
I do. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioner's staff? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for coming in today and giving us your testimony. We'll move on to the next testifier.
Next testifier is David Zimmer from the Center of the American Experiment, in person.
Welcome to the Commission, Mr. Zimmer. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, and thank you to the Commission for holding this public hearing and for allowing me time to speak. My name is David Zimmer. I'm a retired peace officer who served 33 years as a deputy sheriff, a detective, a senior executive overseeing a wide range of public safety roles. One of those roles was managing the Hennepin County Jail, one of the largest detention facilities in the Midwest. In that capacity, I worked alongside my criminal justice system colleagues to ensure that finite bed space in the Hennepin County Jail was used wisely and justly to maximize our public safety efforts. Since my retirement from public service, I've joined Center of the American Experiment as a policy fellow focusing on public safety. In this new role, I have had the time now to dig deep into data surrounding the serious issues impacting our collective public safety. My perspective on the work conducted by the Commission is backed by decades of public safety experience and is supported by data held by the Commission and other state public safety agencies. I'm here to voice concern. I was going to concern, I was going to speak on two issues, but I'll keep it to the public hearing points. So first, the one-half custody status point. As I understand it, the Commission voted in 2019 to permit one-half custody status points in the calculation of criminal history scores for certain lower-level crimes. The intent was clear, as it recognized that a serious prior offense should impact sentencing more than a less serious prior offense. There was little opposition to this change, which intended to improve fairness. Unfortunately, this change created a scoring problem. Rather than making a technical correction, this Commission has spent the better part of two years debating even more profound actions up to and including the complete elimination of the custody status point. As a result of this prolonged debate, applicable cases have presented themselves in our courts for two years, and the courts have been unable to appropriately apply the one-half custody status point as this Commission originally intended. The latest proposal from Commissioner Larkin is an earnest attempt to salvage some form of accountability for those who had a custody status at the time they committed a new offense. It would restore a full custody status point for a smaller list of more serious situations and eliminate the half custody point altogether in the remaining situations. As a practical matter, I support salvaging something, but on a principle matter, I feel compelled to comment that the public has repeatedly made clear that it does not support efforts that weaken rather than strengthen accountability for criminal offenses in Minnesota. As noted at the last meeting, each of the proposals made on this issue represent a reduction in beds compared to pre-Baganovic status. That does not seem to strengthen accountability. The data and the anecdotal examples that we read about in the news daily are clear. We are failing to incarcerate those our legislature intended to be incarcerated. The issue is getting worse, not better, and sadly, the neighborhoods and the communities that criminal justice reform efforts are trying to help are the neighborhoods and communities paying the highest price. I urge the Commission to start and end every discussion with the reminder of its statutory mandate. Quote, "In establishing and modifying the sentencing guidelines, the primary consideration of the Commission shall be public safety," unquote. At a time when our state incarceration rate remains near the bottom in the country, any considerations that further reduce our incarceration rate are, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many, not properly considering public safety. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commissioner's staff? I have one, Mr. Zimmer. Don't walk away. I just want to be clear, because you've been here a couple of times just asking us to think about public safety. So from your perspective, what does it mean to consider public safety? What would you require us to be thinking about to meet that goal?
Well, I think I mentioned this last time I spoke, and primarily, it's the perception that this body is considering the effects on offenders before effects on victims. And I think that says it very succinctly.
So that's your concern, is that what you think, your perception is that you're hearing more concern for offenders than victims in the discussions that we're having? So having more concern for offenders meets public safety for you? I'm just trying to clarify.
Can you repeat that last sentence?
So if there's more discussion about effect on offenders, that meets public safety from your perspective?
If there's more concern for victims.
That's what I meant. I'm so sorry. Yes, I did say that backwards.
I thought you were trying to...
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying to, no. More discussion about the impact on victims is what?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that's clear from many of the comments that the Commission receives and that we receive at Center of the American Experiment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one more question. Commissioner Schnell.
Just a question about this whole, I think you, that we're failing to incarcerate in accordance with legislative intent.
Sorry, this is Kyra. I'm not able to hear Commissioner Schnell.
My apologies. That we're, I think the statement was that we are failing to incarcerate in accordance with legislative intent. I'm just trying to get a sense of, and certainly, you know, the custody, I understand the notion of custody status, but really, that has been less about legislative intent, more related to sentencing policy of the guidelines. I guess the question I have is, you know, how would you view an effective solution to sentencing that does, in fact, fully reflect the legislative intent? And what's missing in current guidelines to allow that to happen?
Well, my comment is from my review of the data, and the data seems pretty clear that departures are setting all-time records, mitigated or downward departures from the sentencing guideline recommendation, as well as, when I looked into just recently data around mandatory minimum sentencing... for gun crimes, so 60911. The legislature intended that somebody who uses a weapon in the commission of a crime is mandatorily sentenced to three years in prison. My look at the data seems very clear that it's nearly 50% of the cases, there's either a dispositional or durational departure from that mandatory minimum sentence. And so, that's where I make the statement, and I feel very confident in making it that our sentencing practices are not reflecting the intent of the legislature.
So, I guess, just a point of clarification would be that we, that the guideline should do whatever it can to limit the ability to depart or to.
I think either the guidelines or the legislature will need to take action on that if the legislature actually wants sentences to reflect their intent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your testimony today. We'll go ahead and call the other testifier.
Next, we have Kelly Jansen. She's participating online.
Is she there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great, Ms. Jansen, welcome to the commission, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for your time today. And my name's Kelly Jansen. So, for the past couple of years, I've worked on the Protect Minnesota Kids Act, which is legislation that strives to obtain justice for innocent child victims of child sexual abuse materials. I'd hate for any actions to be taken by this committee that would allow for more predators to be on the streets longer than they already have, especially when we know that when offenders are behind bars, that is the only place they can no longer hurt innocent children. Probation does little to nothing for them. The offender from Atsigo, the spring that was arrested, is a prime example. While he was on probation, he collected thousands of images of children being sexually assaulted. Some of these victims are so young, they can't even speak words yet. So, I'm here to give them a voice. My request is that you keep the impact crime has on innocent victims at the forefront of all of your decisions. A few months ago, a family member was a victim of a repeat drunk driver crashing into his vehicle head-on. Thankfully, it was on city streets, so it was at lower speeds, and he is okay. But his car was totaled, so that meant staples in his head, days off of work to recover from a concussion, and days off of work to go to court, and then going through the hassle of finding a different vehicle. There are many types of crimes, criminals and victims. They're all unique individuals that, like you, I care about what happens to them. However, the victims are the only innocent ones in this equation. And therefore, getting them justice should be considered the top priority. I'm in support of Commissioner Larkin's proposal, as I think it strikes the right balance. Thank you for your time and service to Minnesota.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen. Does anyone have any questions for this testifier? Commissioner Estrada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming and speaking today. I'm just wondering if you heard our prior speaker talk about in what situations this half custody point moving to a full custody point would impact? It's really those severity level one and two. So, examples that were given by our prior speaker and some of the examples that were given by yourself would not qualify for a half point. So, this proposal doesn't necessarily change that they would get a full point. Is that a clear understanding of yours?
No, I thought that actually they do get a full point, higher-level offenders.
So, exactly, so right now, they would get a full point regardless. Not, they're not eligible now for a half point. So, this proposal does nothing to change any of those examples.
I was just going to ask Ms. Jansen, just to be real clear. Are there, first of all, thank you for coming and expressing your point of view. It's really important for us to hear. I was wondering if there was a specific part of the proposal that raised more concern for you, that impacted the types of crimes that you are particularly talking about today?
No, I think just in general, the proposal, it seemed like the lower-level offenders, that's what you were looking for, was the lower-level offenders would not get the half point anymore.
Right.
The higher-level offenders would get a full point.
That's correct. So, that wouldn't change under this proposal or any of the proposals that have been put forward? So, is that in line with your expectations and what you're hoping to see happen?
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. I think that's it for those questions. And then Commissioner Knutson, it's my understanding you might have a question for one of the former testifiers? Justice Moore, sorry, I missed that. Justice Moore, do you have a question for one of the previous testifiers?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had a question for Mr. Zimmer, if he's still in the hearing room. I had a question regarding his position on the specific proposal.
He is here, he's coming back up right now.
Hello, Justice Moore.
Hello, Mr. Zimmer, and thank you for coming back up to the testifier's chair. I appreciate what you said about the last two years of work the commission has put in on the custody status issue. I guess I wanted a little clarity regarding where you are at on Judge Larkin's proposal that's been advanced to public hearing here. Is this something you think we should approve? Or should we go back to the drawing board? Or should we just stay with the basic status quo that we've had since this problem was an issue, was found out by our director?
I would approve of the acceptance of Judge Larkin's proposal, because as I said, it at least salvages some of the intent. What my concern is, is if that proposal isn't accepted. You know, other proposals have been discussed over the last two years, like doing away with the custody status point completely. And I guess that's where my concern rises from. So, I would like to salvage something, and if that's the only way to salvage it, I would be in support of Judge Larkin's proposal.
All right, that's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Zimmer, and thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging my belated question.
No problem, thanks for coming back up, Mr. Zimmer. Do we have any other testifiers today?
We do not.
All right. All right, well, do we, oh, there's something else I'm supposed to read, isn't there? Okay, assuming, seeing that we do not have any other testifiers present or registered to testify online, that concludes the testimony today? Well, that concludes the testimony of everyone who's registered. Do we want to?
I mean, it's up to you, Madam Chair, people have been informed that they have to register in advance, but if you want to give them a couple of minutes or a minute, just call the phone number 651-296-0144.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and, our practice, since we have gone online, is to leave the meeting, leave the public hearing open for about two minutes to give people one more chance to call in if they are listening and they've decided that they want to testify. So, the instructions are currently online. The fastest way would be to call in at 651-296-0144. Let us know if you want to testify, and then we can bring you online. So, we'll hold this open until about 1:41, 1:42, and we'll come back in just a minute. All right, it looks like we don't have anyone else who's requested to testify, so at this time, I will close the hearing. The record of this public hearing will remain open for five calendar days after today through December 20th, 2022, so that we have the opportunity to receive additional written comments. If you'd like to do that, please submit your comments to the commission's email address at sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us. The public hearing is adjourned. We're now going to take a five-minute break to allow the staff to move us over to our regular meeting setup. Please feel free to remain online or in person for that meeting, if you wish. Thank you all.